...to step forward and provide information on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What this proposed ordinance would do is make some changes to the set of ordinances that we have on licensing security guards. There's a couple of things that it does. The first one is, is it would strike any reference from our ordinances about conditioning the license or requiring certain training or proficiencies with firearms. Since about 2014-
Can you speak just a bit louder, please?
I'm sorry. Since about 2014, due to changes the state has made in state statutes, the city has been prohibited from regulating the carrying or possession of firearms. There's a specific statute that says that. We have this type of language built into our ordinances that if an armed security guard was going to carry a firearm, they would have to indicate that on their application. They would have to pass a proficiency test, and they would also have to pass a, like a written test demonstrating their knowledge of the use of force laws and stuff like that. We're no longer able to enforce those type of regulations, whether it's by ordinance or by process, policy, things like that. The city's precluded from doing that. So this amendment would strike that language from our licensing requirements. The second thing it would do is alter the timelines on how far we look and how we look in deciding whether or not to give somebody a security guard license. As it is now for felony convictions, we look back 20 years. Mistromainers, we look back 10 years. And we define a conviction as virtually anything. It's a finding of guilt in court. It can be a diversion, and it also includes convictions that have been expunged. The amendment that is proposed would begin by changing the definition of what is a conviction. It would not include anything that was a diversion. It would not include anything that was done while the person was a juvenile under the age of 18. And it would not include anything that has been expunged through a court finding from the person's record. Convictions would be only then truly findings of guilt that still appear on somebody's Changing the definition, what it would do then is shorten the look-back periods. We would look for felonies, and because, because of the complexity of Kansas law on felons and possession of firearms and different types of crimes and how long it takes to qualify for an expungement, felony look-back period really needs to be lifetime. We need to be able to look at somebody's entire lifetime if they were convicted of murder, for instance. Under Kansas law, there is no expungement for that. Other offenses, the timelines for expungements, it may be three years, maybe five years. That gives the applicant the ability, if they've had some minor offenses in their past, to get that expungement from the court and then seek approval for their license on shorter time frame, so we wouldn't end up having these very long periods of time where we're disqualifying people. So, in a nutshell, that's what it does.
Okay, and I think just in, in the overview is, I know in the past, we have had difficulty because of the expungements and diversions-
Yes.
-and that hasn't been allowed, so, but now this will make it so that these people could get their license.
Right.
I'm not saying that very well, but you, would you want to state that, sort of state that again, that what that, what that change is?
Right now, we count everything, whether they're found guilty by trial, plead guilty, whether they received a diversion, whether they were a juvenile, and whether they've had the conviction expunged. All of those things count under our current licensing ordinances. What is being suggested is we change the definition of what counts as a conviction, and we take out the juvenile adjudications, we take out the diversions for first offenders, and we take out those convictions that are old enough that a court has found that they should be expunged from a person's record. And we just count what's left.
Okay, yeah, I, I like that. I think this is the direction that I think many of us wanted it to go. Councilman Ortiz?
I think, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my concern would be, if it's a security guard and he got a diversion for, let's say, stealing, and, and he's now going to be a guard at a bank or something like that, I don't know if that's a good example, but a diversion is basically a one-time slap on the hand, we're going to let you go. And so I would be, I would kind of be concerned, do I want that person? You know, do I not want that public? I mean, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's why we're not granting them now, is because, you know, a diversion is basically a slap in the hand, and then the next time, you know, you've got to go all the way through with it.
Sure.
So, that would be my concern.
The difficulty with it is, is, is in trying to define categories of offenses, because if you say we're not, we're not going to count diversions, okay, there's all different kinds of crimes. There's shopliftings and-
Right.
-fighting and DUIs. And ultimately, it's the prosecutors that make the decision on who should be offered a diversion. But the flip side of that is, is if we count diversions and count those as a conviction, we include all of those people.
Have we looked at how long the diversion was? Maybe we could look at it that way, because even, even, I don't want a security guard and he's had a diversion for shoplifting, but maybe I would consider it if it had been maybe five years ago. You know, I do believe in second chances and maybe, but what if he just got a diversion six months ago, and now he's trying to get a security license? I don't know if I'd want him in my house stealing. No, I mean, in my store stealing. I'm, I'm just saying, have we really, really thought about that and looked at that? I know we struggle with that in passing that, you know, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I know.
And, and I believe in second chances, and I know we've given people second chances to get their license, and we've overruled you guys, but at the same time, I think that's kind of a safety net, too. That's all I'm saying. And we can talk further about this, but I just kind of want to throw that out, that to you, throw that out there to you, so when I call, you'll, you'll know what I'm getting ready to say, because-
All right.
-you know, I know there's a lot of people that get diversions, and sometimes that stops them, and sometimes it doesn't.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Another question. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Have you reached out to any of the security guard companies to see how this would affect them? You know, generally, those folks are coming to us to get these, these licenses on the behalf of those companies, having already been offered a job there. Would that change how they would, you know, interview and hire people? I mean, they're all the ones that are offering this service.
I haven't spoken directly with any security guard. People know. What I did was look at a number of other cities and just look to see how they license it and the categories that they use, and what is proposed is very, very similar, but I haven't spoken to security companies, no.
Okay, and then how will that affect our liability? You know, if we license them, we're essentially endorsing them for these positions.
Well, I don't believe we would be liable for it if they commit a crime. Ultimately, they're the ones that are responsible for committing the crime.
And that's true, but if we, right now, you know, we're going back all this time and saying, no, you know, we're, we're doing this vetting, and we're changing our vetting process, I'm concerned that that would change our endorsement of these individuals to have this job.
Councilmember Jensen, I, I don't think that providing somebody with a license is endorsing them. I, I think there's a distinction that can be made, because we issue permits for special events and issue licenses for all kinds of things, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're endorsing that particular event.
By licensing them, we're insinuating that they have a certain set of skills or they have certain qualifications that have been met.
I wouldn't think it goes as far as an endorsement. I think the ordinance will set out, you know, what the qualifications are in order to get a license, and then I think it's up to the private companies to have the, an appropriate vetting process. If it's a bank, for instance, that wants to hire a security guard, I think that they, you know, may have the, the ability to research a little bit further into what that particular individual has done or not done. I don't think they would say, you've got a license, so we're really not going to check into you any further.
And I would hope that's the case. I'm just curious, is, is that actually the case? I mean, we have apparently a very strenuous process now, and I don't know if those companies or institutions are relying on our very strenuous process to handle some of that for them, and, you know, if we're going to change that, I, at least I think we should have a conversation with some of those folks and say, hey, how, do you rely on this more now than, you know, if we change that?
We could reach out.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire?
I agree with Councilmember Ortiz, and I, and I'd like to add, I want high standards for security guards. I don't want them to be able to go, eh, I can be a security guard, it doesn't matter. You know, so I, I'm kind of-
Well, what brought this on is we had an applicant here a while back.
Mm-hmm.
He shot a BB gun at somebody, and he received a diversion for aggravated battery years ago. It was a very old case from like 16 years or something like that, and the way our ordinance is written right now, he would not qualify for a security guard license.
Except, he could then come, appeal it to the council, we override that and issue a license, correct?
Not the way it's written.
No.
The way the appeal right is written is the council is to determine if the facts supporting the denial are correct.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So, along the same line, is there an age limit, then, that we could put on the, I mean, you said juvenile, right?
Juvenile jurisdiction, usually the dividing line is 18 years.
Mm-hmm.
And you're talking about armed security guard, she's getting into handguns and concealed carry and stuff like that, it's probably going to be 21.
That's a tough one.
Understand.
Well, I-
Okay, Councilman Hiller?
And you've got a hand behind you, too.
I'm sorry. I never see, I never see these people, so that's why. Thank you. Yeah, you got to come in. Now, go ahead.
At first blush, I like the rollback to the 10 years and the, and the recognizing the expungements and the diversions. I hate those things, and I, but I don't mind sticking to the rules that we have as long as they're reasonable for the position that we're talking about. And I remember being surprised this time around that it was 20, because I thought we had 10 on most of the things. Maybe that's cable installers and cable salesmen or whatever else we have, but I, I'm comfortable with that rollback. The thing that struck me is, is, I understand that the state law has changed to allow anybody to carry a gun, whether or not they have training. But I have some heartburn about having a security guard carrying a gun for their work and not allowing a proficiency requirement to be included. If somebody's carrying a gun for their job, I think they should know how to care for and shoot a gun and, and, and how, at least the fundamentals of good judgment on, on when and how one would do that. So, does the law really prohibit an employer from having a proficiency requirement, or is it just the issue of carrying the gun?
No, it prevents cities and counties from regulating people carrying firearms.
Okay, so the city, the city is prohibited from carrying the firearms, so can the employer, or from the proficiency requirement, can the employer require proficiency?
I suppose, sure. They could do that as a condition of their employment, that their guards have to do whatever, but the important part for us is, is us as a city, we can't require somebody to pass a proficiency test as a condition of giving them a license.
Okay, so, so it really does fundamentally change what criteria we're looking at to license somebody, then. Instead of, as we did in the past, we are basically verifying their criminal record as, in a certain parameter, and we also used to say they demonstrated that they have the right to carry a gun, so we're, we're taking that totally out.
Correct.
And we're, all we're doing is verifying the criminal history.
That's correct.
But, okay, and just, just, just to confirm again, but, but the employer can require proficiency in firearms management?
I believe that's accurate, yes, they could.
Okay, I didn't want it to be gone altogether. That would be another good reason to have that conversation that you, was suggested earlier, to make sure they knew we weren't doing that for them. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a reason the city has to license security guards? Is this something we've done from a revenue standpoint, or is it something that's required by state law?
Oh, God, do you know the answer to that? I'm not sure I know the answer to that. I know it's, we've always done it. I don't know that it's actually required anywhere.
I just see it as an impediment to somebody getting a job.
I'd have to look into that, but there may very well be a reason why we do it. I just don't know it right off the top of my head.
I feel like Mr. Jensen said, I can see how, somehow, like, it's, the city's vouching, and maybe not legally, but you think there's been some process behind, you know, behind the curtain that's taken place, and so like now we're rolling stuff back, and I just wonder why we're doing it all. Employers can do a lot more than we can.
And I would, you know, I made comment earlier, in the time I've been on the council, many times we have, I think primarily men, come before us, and they haven't been able to get a job for a number of years, and they've gone through expungement or diversion or different issues, and have led that clean lie for many years, but yet we can't grant it because of those provisions. So, and any, many times we've had discussions, isn't it unfair that we can't let them have a job because of something they did, even though it's been expunged or it's been through diversion? So, I think we're going, we're answering some of the, and we've had discussions, we need to change our ordinance. Now, we're making, suggesting to change, so I think we need to consider it, because we're going to have those, they'll be back again. It'll be that tough decision, and we've had them stand here with their wife and children, saying, you won't let me have a job, even though I haven't done anything all this time. And so, there's that other side, and we'll, and they'll be back, so we have to, this is the big picture we have to look at.
For, for this discussion, in the past, when we have talked about this before, we've been able to have either the city attorney's office, or maybe the clerk's office, give us a list of all the different things that we license. It's just, it's had the name of the license and then just a little nugget about the requirements and so on, and particularly, you know, to know what all's on that list for our newer members, as well as to be able to compare the requirements, you know, is it 10 years or 20 years or whatever amongst them? It'll give us a little context to look at this. If we could get that list to, I'm not quite sure where mine is, so maybe everyone, so we could look at it, that would be helpful.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the merchant guard license changes? City man, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Other than the fact that I will commit to Councilmember Emerson that will get you an answer to that.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, that completes the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation. We're to line, discussion item C.
C is Decession Concerning the 2015 Visit to Topeka Incorporated Annual Report.
Your city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask Mr. Brett Oding, who is the president of the Visit Topeka, to come forward. He's going to provide a brief overview through our, our funding mechanism. We provide about $1.7 million to Visit Topeka. They do a lot of work on our behalf, both in terms of, of reaching out and about the community and attracting people here. They also have a bid fund that they use. Mr. Oding has agreed to come forward and provide us an overview, and this will happen periodically.
Thank you, Mr. Oding.
Good evening. Since I'm last on the agenda, I promise I'll stay under 30 minutes.
Okay, great. It will be shorter than that.
Yeah. It'll be considerably shorter.
Thank you.
Every quarter, we do a quarterly report, and you should all have it in front of you right now. So what, what this presentation's going to be is just some slideshows and, of some of the highlights of, of more interesting aspects.
Welcome, Mr. Wizard.
She should be back now.
Saying no signal.
I, I think we can, let's, let's proceed if we can all, we have this in front of us that we can follow, so-
There we go.
Proceed.
Ah, Ronaldo's here.
So, 2015, the 2015 year proved to be up in hotel revenues, which is where the transient guest tax comes from. Occupancy was up over the year before. The average rate in hotels in Topeka was up, as well as the overall city revenues. Last year, citywide revenues for hotels was $41 million. That was up about a half a million dollars over the year before. That translates to around $2.5 million in revenues. When you look at our different funding sources, last year, our budget was $1.312 million. That was our operating budget. Excuse me, about 50% of our op, 50% of our budget was operations, the other 50% was sales and marketing. When I started just over a year ago, I wanted to take as much of that money and put it into marketing as possible as a way to help promote the city. This year, we've received about $200,000 more than we did in 2015, and most of that money, $130,000 of that money went to marketing, the other went to sales. We actually cut back our operating expenses this year, so we're trying to stay really lean. We have a staff of nine. There's a couple slides I hope you can get figured out, but no pressure. But, the bid fund is something that I did want to talk about. We receive a bid fund in addition to our operating budget. That is $175,000 last year. Of that $175,000, we had 16 different events that we bid. The bid fund is just what it sounds like. We take that money, all my sales staff goes out to trade shows and conferences and tries to find events to bring to Topeka. A lot of those in the last 10 to 15 years have started as a way to help their operating costs have required money upfront, essentially saying, if you don't give us $10,000, we won't even put you in the running. So, we have to be willing to give them this money, and then after that, we put a RFP in to try to win the bid. So this money is helping us bring these events in. We had 16 events last year, as I said. 12,000, 12,800 room nights came out of those rooms, or out of that, out of that money. That money also equated to $3.1 million in economic impact from direct spending into the community. So, these people, we, we give them the money, they bring their convention to town, and their attendees, it was around 28,000, if I, if I remember the number correctly. 28,000 attendees attended these events, ate at restaurants, bought gas, shopped, did all that stuff to the tune of $3.1 million. One other thing of note with that, like I said, we gave out $87,000 to the bid fund, but what we brought back in from these 16 events was $89,000. So we had a 102% return on that investment. So, they're bringing in business more than what we expected. We have a very strict guideline as to what, how we give the money out for the bid fund. We look at a return on investment. My staff calls up the different cities and the different hotels that that organization has been at before to find out how many rooms they had, what their rate was, how many attendees they had, and then we try to verify with the organization as well, so we can get a pretty good idea of what we think they're worth to us. And so last year, it proved that we were pretty much spot on. We made our money back. On a side note, one, one thing is interesting, it's not really Visit Topeka's rule, but since I've been here, I've felt like it is important enough to take it on as a rule, but I, I feel like we have a direct impact on sales tax collections as well. Just as someone comes and stays at a hotel and pays transient guest tax, they pay sales tax dollars as well. If they eat in a restaurant, they're not paying transient guest tax dollars, but they are paying sales tax collections. So, those 16 events last year, just themselves, between hotel sales tax dollars and visitor spending dollars at restaurants and all that, was $571,000 in sales tax collections that went to the municipalities, that you can obviously use for, for roads and bridges and, and whatever you need. So, tourism and travel here in Topeka is economic development. 4,900 jobs are serviced through travel and tourism. $397 million in the last year was a direct impact of travel and tourism in the community. So, we consider the bid fund as an investment for the city, that we can work that money as long as we continue to stay strategic with how we spend it, we can use those dollars and we can bring different events in. Other than that, there was a lot of other slides with pictures and some things going on, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, I, you were, worked with the horseshoe tournament they had last summer, and the uniqueness about that, they were here for like two weeks?
Two weeks.
And how much was the bid? I know there was, it was a large amount was a bid fund, but if, and I know, like, because they were here so long, it was like a million dollars worth to the community.
Yeah, I believe that bid was just over $20,000 to get that. And then in addition, we also had some other servicing. We, we had to help set, set up, and we helped them market around the community, look for sponsors, do other things like that. We partnered with the Expo Center on some additional costs, but direct bid fund money to them was just over $20,000.
And how, how much was there, did they bring into the community?
It was, it was almost $2 million in direct spending to the community. The, the city had a great two weeks. Last year's month was, was head and shoulders over previous year's months. And we have some really good events going on this summer as well. I, I'm starting to remember some of the things in the slide. One, one thing to note, this year, as of right now, we, the city over last year, we had such a great 2015, we're up in occupancy, more people are coming to stay in hotels. The average rate of hotel rooms is $1.80 higher than it was last year, so we're continuing to increase the rate for people coming in. But, at the end of April, the citywide hotel revenues were $968,000 over the same time last year, through the first four months of the year. That's pretty remarkable, and, and the summer is looking like it's going to continue. By comparison, $1 million after the state takes their 2% fee would be about $68,000 in transient guest tax collection. So, we're about $68,000 in receivables ahead of last year, not even halfway through the year.
Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brett, I think things are really going fabulously, and, and the, in the 2015 report, we had the bid fund approved commitments, and you show that even out to 2019, we have some of our state games that are getting $25,000. So you're looking not just next year, but it's, it's, it's on out there to 2019. So, the other thing that I kind of wanted to point out was that your numbers, it, the thing that I look at a lot, being on the TGT Committee now for three years, is the attraction numbers and the attendance, and I know you have that in this quarterly report. I really appreciate the fact that you've, you're listing that now by the numbers, and the zoo had 311,000, which is 100,000 over 2014 report. The next was Old Prairie Town at 90,000, then the Discovery Center at 85,000. To me, what this is going to prove is what, where we spend our money. One of my disappointments in this was the Overland Station, and I don't know if we have to get out the word more, that we get more people to using that. I was just there at a function with the Kansas Children's Service League, and it's a beautiful building, but it only had the, do you remember off the top of your head? It was Great Overland Station, 28,000.
28,000.
Yeah. So that's, that's way down the list. And the other thing that I wanted to also express is that you're going to be adding to this, the Sunflower Soccer and any other entity that we may be giving funding to from the transient guest tax.
Yes, we, for 2016, we've already started receiving info. One of my staff calls each one of these venues once a month. Some, some are through correspondence with email, some are by phone calls, but, but they get the attraction numbers. But because of the increase in the, the 1% with Evil Conneval, Constitution Hall, Jehah Theater, and then Sunflower Soccer, we are getting their numbers, and Evil Conneval, of course, when it opens up, we'll be getting their numbers as well. So, yeah, so those will be added to the list, and they have, we have already been in communication, we're getting those numbers from them.
And then my final comment or question is, if you could share what we heard today at the transient guest tax about the room key cards, that was just phenomenal, that, and I think everybody should hear that, what, what is going on?
The vacation value card. We have a card that we started, it's called the vacation value card. It's the size of a business card, but what we've done is we went around to some of the attractions, and we asked them to offer for people that are outside of Shawnee County discounts for when they come into town to attend things. It might be something as simple as buy one, get one free, buy one, get one half off, 50% off, whatever they want to offer. But the vacation value card this year has- But the Vacation Value Card this year has over $100 in value to it for different families that are going around. We based that on a family of four, mom, dad, and two kids. So, one thing we've tried to do this year, to add on to last year, is a way to get that out more, is we purchased just over 10,000 hotel room key cards. If you stay in a hotel, you know, it's like a credit card, and you swipe to go in the room and all that, usually it has the brand logo of whatever hotel you're staying in. We actually created these key cards that look just like the Vacation Value Card, and on the card, it tells people to go to our website to get over $100 in value for your family while you're here in town. When they go to the website, then they can see what their offer is. All they have to do at the attractions, at the zoo, they just show the key card. So, every hotel in the city are using those. So, we're touching, you know, there's going to be times when, obviously, when a hotel might run out, and we're a couple days in between, or something like that, but we would like to feel that we're touching every single hotel guest that's coming into the community right now with what that offering is, and we're showing some great returns off of that right now. Another slide was talking about, we have some tracking software that when people go to that, we're able to track when they come to the community. And last year, when we first started that program, there were 2,400 people that went to the website and then received that card, and of those people, they had just over $800,000 in direct spending in the community.
And you might also comment on the app that's going to become available that was suggested.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen had brought up an app last year.
June 30th at 4:00 PM, we have our new website going live, and it is very interactive and user-friendly. It's a lot easier for people to move around. We have some microsites that involve heritage tourism, our events app, Topeka365.com is all on here, so it's a one-stop shop to drive everybody on there. After the website goes live and all the kinks are worked out, we've got approval from the App Store and Google Play Store. We have an app. You go on the App Store, you go to type in "Visit Topeka," you download the app, and it pulls all the info from our website onto the app. But two other great things about the app, number one, we can add different things to the app. We can add specials, so we can advertise to people, go download the app and get some specials that you can't get anywhere else. That way, they download the app. And number two, it is location-based, so if you're standing right here and someone wants to type in "restaurants close to me," they can see what restaurants are close, or how do I get to the zoo from here, it will show you turn-by-turn directions through Google Maps. A third thing that we are going to be starting very small, on a small basis with this as well, is that we can have push notification emails, so anybody that downloads the app, if, for instance, the Food Truck Festival is going on Saturday, there's over 40 food trucks at Gage Park. On Friday night, we can send a text message out to anybody that has that app downloaded saying, "Don't forget the Food Truck Festival tomorrow at 11 o'clock at Gage Park."
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Brett, thanks. Thanks for your report. Could you just briefly tell, you shared with me yesterday, constrain you guys having the bid fund because you can only be funded, you think by law, a year at a time, and therefore, sometimes you guys max out on events you can attract because, well, please share.
Sure, sure. As Councilwoman Schwartz said, with the bid fund, we're bidding out as far as 2019 and 2020. The discussion with you, Councilwoman Emerson, was that we have so much money, we have $175,000 this year. If we were to win a bid, for instance, this year, the Kansas Kids Wrestling, which is very important to our community, that bid is up, and they're looking for a three, four, or five-year bid. If we were to win that bid at, say, $20,000 a year, then that is $100,000 that we have to pledge to them for future years. With a one-year contract, we can assume that you are going to pass, that we get the bid fund next year, but that would be very dangerous on our part just in case it doesn't go through. We still have a contract signed with an organization in future years in advance saying that we owe them that money. So, even though we may receive that money this year, that does not always necessarily mean we can spend all of that money, because we might have it promised out for future years.
Good point. That's a good point. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking in here, the food truck this year at Gage Park, correct? It was fabulous last year.
It was.
I just have one complaint. We had all the trucks in one area, and all the lines where everybody was together, and people were fighting on who was in one line. I think it would be very beneficial, seriousness, with all seriousness, if they had trucks in different parts on both sides of the park, because there were so many people, it was overwhelming.
It was, you know.
And I have a picture that I can send you.
Oh, I was there. I waited for an hour for a Philly cheesesteak last year. You know, last year was the first year we did that.
I understand.
And we found 10 food trucks in the Topeka Lawrence area and thought that that'd be, you know, a great time, and we had 10,000 people show up. So, we found out that Topequans love food and they love food trucks. But what I noticed, more importantly than the lines, were that when people were done eating, they were going to the park, they were going to the zoo, they were hanging out. And so, to me, it seemed more of a family-friendly event than just go have some food and head home. So, this year, we really stressed on the food trucks, but we also stressed on other things going on throughout the park as well. So, this year, as of this afternoon, we have 40 food trucks signed up. We're hoping to get a couple more that we're still waiting on their paperwork to come through. Those will not be all over the park, but they will be strung out about three times longer than what they were, and they're not backed up to each other this year. They're all in one single file line, so it'll be a lot easier to get in line. We also have Topeka Metro, because there was a parking issue, we have Topeka Metro that is going to be offering free shuttles from Hayden High School and Hummer Sports Park as well, if you can't find parking. But there's great things going on all the way over to the west end of the park, there's different things going on. The Discovery Center's doing things. So, it's going to be a really great event for families, and it's something that a family should expect to be there for a few hours, not just come and wait for some food, and there won't be hour-long lines this year, I don't think, not with 40 food trucks. The food trucks, in addition to us, understood how busy it was last year, and they're assuring us that they will make sure they have enough food individually as well.
And I'm glad to hear that, because we stood in line for hours after we figured out we were in the wrong line, because people were pushing us, and then there was no food. And I think what happened was, a lot of the vendors were very leery, but they did see this was awesome.
Yeah. For those of you that attended the downtown Jazz and Food Truck Festival last year, you'll remember that all the food trucks were on the east side of the road, and all the lines were forming from the west heading east, and that's kind of how it will be this year. There will not be any confusion on the lines. You'll see single-file lines every few feet or so for each food truck.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cohen.
Could you follow up with us at the next quarterly report and tell us the metrics on how the app was downloaded, and maybe how many things had been redeemed?
Absolutely.
You know, things like that.
Yeah.
Be good.
Absolutely.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I want to jump back to the bid fund real quick. In the world of JDO, we're able to handle multi-year commitments with taxes, and I'm wondering, without, you know, there's a very large governmental process that goes along with handling those multi-year commitments, and I'm wondering, without getting to that level, if there's anything we at the city can do working with you to create more flexibility for some of these multi-year agreements? Was that, I mean, really, if you're talking about bang for buck, if you can go in and get somebody to commit to several years, that really gives us as a community an opportunity to plan and grow around those, so.
Yeah, you know, that would be appreciated, for sure. You know, we did gamble just a little bit this year. After last year's budget session, we had a general understanding from Mr. Coulson and staff that he felt like, saying that he was confident that we would have that bid fund for three years, looking at the makeup of the council, that all of you were going to be here. Again, there was an understanding that we felt pretty good about it. So, we did step outside of the box just a little bit, but it still has, gives me some reservation, knowing that if worse comes to worse, we would have to possibly pull money out of our operating fund to fund events. So, we didn't go too far, but for sure, we would be able to tap into different events that we may not otherwise, if we knew that that funding source was going to be there long-term.
Jim, Lisa, is there something we can do as the...
I think that's something we can look at.
Okay.
I think that would be in action, our budgeting this year, budgeting process, look at that and how we can express that in a certain way to make it...
Because I do think they need that flexibility, especially if you want to get to the next level of events for our community.
Right. I agree, that's something we need to look at.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Just some quick feedback.
His time is running out, so we have to, just a few more questions.
Unfortunately, there's not a question included in this. I just, it's exciting to hear all of the things that you're refreshing and updating. We all want Topeka 365 to just fly, and I know you've been working on that. And the fundamentals in terms of what we measure, when you first came on board, and I'm hearing it again now, yes, we want people from out of town to come, but you focused on doing things that people in Topeka would love to do, knowing that if we love to do them, other people will come. And also, measuring sales tax, not just bed tax, I think really rounds out what you're doing for this community, and I really appreciate hearing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Brett. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good presentation. That completes the discussion items for this evening. We now have the announcements, and the first is the preliminary agenda for the council meeting next week.
Next week, on the consent agenda, we have two noise exceptions. We have a workers' comp claim for Gregory Vogue, a board appointment to the Topeka Human Relations Commission. For the action items, we have an ordinance for zoning requests from the Topeka Planning Commission. We have a public hearing, an ordinance from the Topeka Rescue Mission on a vacation. We have an ordinance regarding the merchant guard license changes, and an ordinance regarding the dangerous dog ordinance amendments. Discussions include helping hands humane society property located at 2625 Northwest Rochester Road, discussion of a resolution requesting the Kansas Department of Transportation to install of harry and culminatory signs on the interstate highway around the city limits, and a discussion regarding amending court costs. And, excuse me, discussion regarding the history and overview of the Riverfront Park project.
Okay, all right. Thank you. For the announcements, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first Budget Committee meeting is this Saturday, June 11th, it starts at 8:00 AM, it will be over by 11:00 AM. This is a public meeting that will be televised, the 2017 budget.
Start over.
First Budget Committee meeting is this Saturday, June 11th, at 8:00 AM, at the Law Enforcement Center. It will be televised, and the budget book will be posted, a budget will be posted online this week. Also want to recognize that several city staff members and members of the police department have been selected to participate in the Latino Leadership Collaborative of Kansas, really cool. This is the second year they're going to be doing it. The people participating are Sylvia Davis, who's the General Manager of Water Pollution Controls, Simon Martinez, Chief Accounting Officer, Tammy Torres from HR, Officer Gina Dami, Officer Robert Razzo, and Sergeant Manny Munoz. This program's really geared to increasing leadership skills for Latinos and organizations that do work in the Latino community, so this is very exciting. And the last bit of news that hit today was the Topeka and Shawnee County Public Library was selected the 2016 Library of the Year. And that is the 2016 Library Year for all of the United States and Canada. There were over 9,500 libraries, so it's pretty impressive.
Very fantastic.
I just, I want to mention a review of some of the economic development issues the last couple weeks that we have happening in our community. First of all, was the SE2 with 200 new jobs with average salaries of over $52,000. This has received coverage throughout the nation. This is one of the most sought, would be one of the most sought-after economic development victories for any community. Then Futur Muru, the Japanese company who bought the cellophane plant east of town, that has been on the verge of closing or near closing for a number of years. They bought it and are putting $30 million into it, investment, and looking at increasing the jobs and also introducing a new production line. So, there will be significant new jobs there in the near future. And then last week, we had the Great Plains Energy Purchase of Westar, something we knew would be happening, but the significant point is how strongly they support the philosophy of the Westar, like all they do for the community. The deputy mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with the CEO and the leadership, and they are extremely committed to maintaining a strong presence of Westar for the Kansas side of their company. And that's so important, again, for the jobs that are vital to us. And then also, we just learned that within the next two weeks, another company in Topeka is going to be making another, an announcement for some significant number of additional jobs. So, these things usually always happen in a roll, and there's a group together, but this speaks so highly, I believe, of what is happening in Topeka, some of the good things going on, and certainly because of some good leadership in the economic development area and in all of the areas going on in the community. And then we actually start going around with the person who gives the invocation. So, you happen to be first.
Okay, great. Well, on Thursday, in beautiful District Four, out of Dorward Park, we will be having the opening ceremonies, the ribbon cutting, I guess, for the first two new baseball diamonds that the county has done. So, I encourage everyone in District Four, as well as everyone from the city, to come out and join us with that. Thank you.
What time?
Oh, sorry, 6:00.
All right. Councilman Jensen.
Well, for years, my summer has always gone from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I recently learned that that's not the official start of summer. However, for my entire life, it's been my official start of summer, and I want to say happy unofficial start of summer to everyone. And I also want to congratulate the library. That is an incredibly prestigious award. I know those folks have worked for years and years to achieve that, and I just cannot tell you how proud of their efforts I am in achieving that award. Have a great week, everybody.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I attended the Health Access Meeting this last week with, at 7:00 in the morning, at Stormont, and this is about what the Marion Clinic has been now transferred to Grace Med, and heard some really good things, and they're doing improvements, and they're going to, Dr. Teetz is beginning to see patients yesterday, I believe. And they got a grant from Susan Duffy, found a grant on the Department of Transportation to establish a medical route downtown, and that's going to be coming up. But I commend Susan Duffy for reaching out to work with other entities in our community, and this Health Access was one of them. So, I wanted to say, shout out to Susan. Also, Matt Pyranik has been going around our districts, and he was in my district last week, and we had coffee at Kara's Cup. And so, I just think there's some really good things. So, my gem of the week actually has to do with Memorial Day. This was our first year to decorate a grave in Topeka. Chief Justice McFarland's, I could not believe the efforts that the cemeteries go to, to make it so nice for people to come to the grave. So, the cemeteries, Mount Hope and Memorial Gardens, all of them, thank you.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you. I've been telling you about this for several weeks, but Topeka Gives was today at Fairlawn Plaza Mall, and I hope to have some numbers to share with you next week. If you're looking for some nightlife, I encourage you guys to come over and check out Speck's Tavern on Sunday. They have live music out there. It's an open mic night, it's in the back. And if you're a child of the 80s like I am, you'll really enjoy the 80s party on June 17th at the Lazy Toad. So, hope to see you over there on our side of town.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Just a couple short things. One, I really like the new formats for the Public Works Reports. That's really great. I, too, was involved in Topeka Gives, not as much as you perhaps, but I did my two-hour stint at a booth and made the rounds, and if you haven't done it, you should go just for the experience. It is phenomenal, and I, too, checked my cellphone to see if there were some preliminary numbers to report, and I don't see anything yet, but it's worth watching for, it'll be an eye-opener, I'm quite sure. And also, I got called by the YWCA to go to an event at the YW this past Sunday evening. They got a grant to do voter registration for people who've never voted, grassroots people who've never voted, and they had over 60 people for hot dogs and baked beans at the YW, a number of whom did register to vote for the first time. And it's exciting to see that sort of initiative going on as well in Topeka. That's it.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Want to remind you of the North Topeka On the Move Association concerts in the park, and North Topeka Community Band will perform on the 20th at the Garfield Gazebo. I will be at KTWU tomorrow night for the pledge drive with the Sheepdog Impact Assistance. And I went to Topeka Gives, and I mean, so many interesting things. But something that touched me was the Pet Assistance Network of Topeka. And what they do is, if someone is homeless and they have a pet, they find a place for that pet until they can... that pet until they can get them back. And that just touched me. He said, "Well, we're trying to get our word out, we're just..." I said, "Well, I'll help you. I'll mention that tonight," so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that we've lost a big pillar in East Topeka, is Pastor Templeton at the Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church, and he has pastored over there for 50-plus years, and I just want to send condolences and out to his family and his church family. He's done an awesome job with giving back to the community. They've had barbecue dinners, given away clothes, and thus forth. So, it's a sad occasion, but it's a joyous occasion to see what one person can do and how many lives he can touch. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That completes the announcements. We have no one for public comment tonight, so we have, go to an executive session if the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion would be that the governing body recess into executive session for a period of 10 minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding potential or pending litigation that requires privileged attorney-client communication. In order to aid the discussion following, individuals should be present, elected officials, city manager, deputy city manager, HR director, risk manager, and myself.
All right, let's have a motion. If you'll move. Councilman Jensen moves. Councilman Cohen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have six yes.
Six having voted yes. We will go into executive session as soon as the room is clear.